Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We appreciate you being here with us tonight. My name's Wayne Addison. I'm going to be the moderator of this debate that we're going to have tonight. Now, this is the third and final debate that we've had with various candidates on the Republican Party that are seeking nomination for county office. Tonight, we have 10 candidates that are here. There are a total of 11 candidates altogether that are seeking three at-large seats to represent you citizens of Hancock County for Hancock County Council. So, I want to kind of just explain a little bit about what's happening. Basically, the definition of a debate. A debate is a discussion between people in which they express their different opinions about a subject. Now, our subject tonight is their request to become the Republican nominee for the three positions of county council at large. And they very well may have different opinions than the other candidate. However, I want each one of these candidates to know they need to express their opinion and talk when it's their turn to talk. We'd like to ask that no one interrupt any other candidate. We haven't had any issues, but no one to interrupt any other candidate. And I've been told at work, they give me a hat, and it says "Boss" on it. So, I'm the boss, so that's the reason that we'll put that hat on as far as I'm the boss as far as running this. Now, normally, when I talk to people at work and they don't do what I tell them to do, they go to jail. That's the other career. But we won't do that tonight. But everybody knows the secret word as far as if you go a little bit beyond. I know you're all passionate about this because it's very important, and we appreciate that each one of you are here. So, I've kind of explained to everybody that we're going to have two minutes to introduce themselves. And to be fair, since we have so many candidates, I'm going to put all these names in a hat, the boss hat, and I'm going to pull out a name, and we will start with that person, and then they'll work their way through. And I'll do that with each question. That way, it's kind of fair to everyone. That way, everybody has a first chance to go. Now, I do want to tell people, as far as if you're out there in the audience and you're saying, "Hey, I thought there's 11 candidates." There are 11 candidates. Candidate Kent Fisk is not here tonight. He's out of town. He's on vacation, and so he's not here to be involved in this debate. You might buy a newspaper. You could see all their ideas. That's pretty good, wasn't it? You could see all their ideas if you look at the reporter, because each candidate had a chance to talk about their candidacy and what they would like to bring to the county. So, what I'm going to do now, I'm going to go ahead, and I'm going to pull a name out. We'll see which candidate will start first, and I'm going to give each candidate two minutes to introduce themselves. At a minute forty-five, I'll ding the dinger, and then at two minutes, you'll know it's time's up, and then we'll go on to the next person. And we started off with Steve Crane. So, Steve Crane, you have got two minutes to begin the process and tell the people why you're here.
Hi, folks. Is the sound on? Hi, folks. My name is Steve Crane. I was born and raised in Hancock County. I graduated from Eastern Hancock. I have a wife and two children here. I'm a business owner in Hancock County and been an auctioneer here in the county for almost 20 years. Being in business for myself for so long, I understand what it means to make decisions between needs and wants, what it means, what it takes to make smart, well-thought-out decisions, and what it means to be balanced and have reasonable thinking and common sense. Now, in the next hour and a half, we're going to touch on a lot of subjects that are going to affect our bottom line and that directly affect you and I, the taxpayer. There's going to be much to consider in our long-term strategies for our county department heads, county employees, county and local officials, as well as we, the people. Some of the topics that are important to me, and I hope to you as well, are roads, and we all know about that, and the fairgrounds project, which I hope you've heard about that, and the county jail, community corrections issues with population maintenance, potential construction projects that could occur in the future. Issues in our insurance provider that doesn't allow our sheriff to use inmate trustees to help maintain basic maintenance around the jail, the courthouse, and the county, which in turn would save us some taxpayer dollars. And then there's this, which I feel is probably the most important. It's been talked about in the other debates, and we're going to have to deal with this, hopefully sooner than later. It's going to cost the taxpayers, but many in our community, it's going to be greater than that. They're going to pay with their hearts and with their lives. And the problem I'm talking about is the heroin and drug problem. So, that's going to affect us as taxpayers in this county. This one subject alone is a large threat to our way of life in the county. The backlash of HIV hepatitis C with shared needles and homes being broken into are affecting a lot of innocent people in our county, and it's going to have to be dealt with on a level above and beyond all this. Thank you.
What happened? That was perfect, I guess, right there on the buzzer.
Well, I had to cut it short a little.
Oh, okay. All right. George Langston, you have two minutes, sir, to speak to the people.
Thank you, and good evening. I want to thank The Daily Reporter and Nine Star for sponsoring the debate. I also am a lifelong resident of Hancock County and graduated from Greenfield Central. I am a licensed aircraft mechanic, retired, and also a retired Air Force Master Sergeant. And for more information on me, you can find my Facebook page by using George R. Langston in the search field. What can a few people do? A lot, if we're in the right place at the right time. The right time is now, and if the public wants to take back their county government, this is the time to do it. The primary purpose of the council is to fund critical needs of the county. In July of last year, the Sheriff's Department requested four additional deputies, two for courthouse security and two for enhanced drug enforcement. Unfortunately, at a vote of seven to zero, the county council disapproved the request even though they knew they had over a million dollars of public safety funds. Fortunately, at the urging of all three county judges and the probation department, the council reversed itself in September, hiring the equivalent of one and a half deputies. Our county council is under the impression that all is well in paradise. Unfortunately, there is a significant number of individuals here in the county struggling, especially senior citizens and others on fixed income that did not receive a pay raise last year. Now, these same people, excuse me, yet the council saw fit to raise taxes and stack additional bonds on these people. Now, these same people can look forward to a significant tax increase in the burden of more property taxes for non-cap property owners after farm land values will be lowered. Our council has also signaled there will be also a bond this year. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, this time, I would like to ask Mark Lozier to give his two minutes as to why he wants this position. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, and thank you. And thank you to The Daily Reporter, Greenfield Schools, and Nine Star. My name is Mark Lozier. My wife, Kim, is in the audience. I'd like to take this opportunity to tell you a little about myself and why I would serve the taxpayers of Hancock County well. I've lived in Hancock County for three years with my wife, Kim. I'm a member of the Park Chapel Christian Church, along with substitute teacher in Hancock County, working with the youth of our community. Plus, I'm a long, long-life resident of the great state of Indiana. My grandfather, Raymond Delpa, Marshall County in northern Indiana, was a delegate for the 1964 Republican National Convention. That was a convention that elected Barry Goldwater as a Republican presidential nominee. And as you can see, the Republican blood runs in the family. I am ready to roll up my sleeves and work for the citizens of Hancock County. I've learned a lot from being in the Eagle Scout, along with serving as an assistant scout master and a water instructor for the over past decades. I bring extensive experience working with a variety of people in a range of capacities, including a facilitator, professional claims coach, educator, and an advocate. My ability to communicate efficiently with people of all different backgrounds serves me well. I believe in establishing an environment of respect, along with engaging all parties in a process in which every person feels empowered and heard. I believe I have a lot to offer to the citizens of Hancock County. Most importantly, I come with a fresh perspective. Over the next hour and a half, this debate, you will learn more about my position. My name is Mark Lozier. I look forward to your vote.
Thank you, sir. Now, I'd like to ask the next candidate, which is Bob McDaniel.
Thanks, Wayne. I also would like to thank The Reporter for having this, and Nine Star, and everybody that's come out this evening for your evening time. I also am a lifelong resident of the county. I was born about a mile from here, and I've lived in the county all my life within 10 miles of the hospital. Some of you probably remember my mom, Ann. She was clerk and treasurer here in the county, and she worked for the county for some 20-odd years. I've been married this summer 38 years to my wife, Donna. We have two grown boys and one grandson. I retired from the Indianapolis Fire Department in December. After 35 years working there, we still have two farms we run, and we have a lot of livestock. We raise and exhibit sheep, much like I try and tell people, it's like the Westminster Dog Show, the way we exhibit those sheep and sell livestock. I am the current township trustee in Jackson Township. I've been in that position for 15 years, and before that, I was on the Eastern Hancock School Board. I think what I bring to the table is different, probably, than most others setting up here, is that I, as trustee, have sat with that DLGF, folks, or the State Tax Board, whatever you want to call them, and the trustee's the one who sets those budgets, crunches those numbers, and does all the figures with those folks. In the 15 years I've been the trustee in Jackson Township, we've increased our cash balance almost 400 percent. Everything we've bought, everything we've done to the fire station, we have paid cash for, and still increased our budget 400 percent. We have a new truck planned for 2017, which will be about a $250, maybe $300,000 piece of equipment, and I plan to pay cash for that when it's purchased. The thing I also bring is with being the trustee, and at one time, I was the assessor before they took that away from us, is knowing the tax rates and assessments. While your rates seem to come down, everybody wants to talk about tax rate. Your rate goes down, your rate goes down, they keep hollering that. But at the same time, our assessments are climbing up. So, yours and mine out-of-pocket for our tax dollars are going up a little bit more. What we've got to remember is, for every two to five cents we put on something, it means an increase of maybe $20 to $50 on your tax bill. Thanks. Appreciate your vote.
Thank you, sir. Every time I hit that, I push the wrong button. All right. Next, I would like to introduce Edgar Moore.
Good evening, and I'd like to be upfront. I'm not a public speaker. Now, with that said, I would like to thank The Daily Reporter, Nine Star, and Wayne for hosting this event. I'm Edgar Moore, a local businessman here for 26 years, community volunteer with a passion to serve. Been married for 33 years to my lovely bride, Marcia. Have four grown kids, eight grandchildren, and the call to serve to the county council is part of my upbringing. Serving our community has been lived out before me and ingrained into my core. My father served 32 years on the Hancock County Sheriff's Reserve, and as a child, I participated in the FFA, 4-H, and those are organizations that groomed to serving and giving back. I'm a high school graduate from this school, from Greenfield Central. I've served a number of nonprofit organizations, like the Greenfield Fire Department. Currently, on the Meals on Wheels Board and the Leadership of Hancock County Board. I'm a very active member in the Brandywine Community Church. Haven't seen many changes over the years, a lot of good and some not so good. I believe I am the right candidate for this job. It is time for me to put my practices of my life experiences. I'm honest, fair, and understanding. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now, I'd like to ask John Prieri to go his two minutes, sir.
Good evening. My name is John Prieri. I've been a resident of Hancock County for 20 years now. A little bit about my background. I was invited to join the U.S. Army back during the Vietnam era. I entered as a private and served in the infantry initially. I later attended Infantry Officer Candidate School and graduated as a second lieutenant. After spending over 20 years in the service, I retired in the rank of Lieutenant Colonel. My post-military career basically involved serving in the multifamily housing industry and construction industries as a senior executive. I also owned my own business and operated it for about eight years, and it was a construction and restoration company. I have a Bachelor of Science in Business Management with minors in economics and accounting. I also completed several graduate courses, plus a lengthy list of specialized schools and training for senior executives in the Department of Defense. I am currently a member of the Blue River Township Board. I have also served a prior term in the same position. The first reason I'm running for county council is that I feel that I have a lot to contribute to the betterment of the community, especially to those that are financially struggling and on fixed incomes. If I am elected to the council, I can convince three other members of the council to vote as I will, that the taxpayers, farmers, and business owners of this county will be paying less in taxes and will be able to keep more of their hard-earned money. Also, as a council member, you can expect me not to vote for any of the new taxes that are coming out of this year's legislative session. I prefer to allow the taxpayers to keep those funds. My second reason for running...
John, that's your two minutes. Okay? Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Time flies when you're having fun. I understand. Okay? Now, this time, I would like for Dave Roberts to introduce himself and have his two minutes to speak.
All right. Well, thank you. This is Dave Roberts, and this is a great opportunity to be here tonight. I want to thank everyone that made this night possible, and especially those of you that don't have family interests with those of us up here for giving up your evening. It's also different that we're sitting down instead of walking around, which is maybe where I'm more comfortable, so I'll try not to hit Martha and John as we're talking up here. Just to give you a little bit of background, I've been married for 10 years this year to my wife. Neither of us grew up here in Hancock County. I'm from a small town called Bluffton, Indiana, just south of Fort Wayne. My wife is from Missouri, a small farm town that had a stop-sign mailbox and a bunch of farms around it. So, when we had the opportunity to move here in 2011 from Illinois, where I was working for Caterpillar, we looked at the opportunities on the north and east side of town. My job at the time was up in Cassleton, and we made a conscious decision to land here in Hancock County because it resonated with us. It felt like home. And we've enjoyed living here. Our two young children are in the New Powell Elementary School system, and we've just really enjoyed becoming part of the community. One of the reasons that I would like to serve the community in this capacity is that we want to continue to strengthen the community, the county. We've seen it develop in just the short time that we've been here. We want to give back to the county and make sure that it is a strong place for us to raise our children. We believe, I believe, that part of that is in strong budgets, responsible budgets, and so that being within the purview of the county council is one of the things that attracted me to the opportunity. And the other thing is that we need strong economic development. I've had the opportunity to work with a number of agencies at the state and local level, and I believe that that would be a focus of my time here, serving the county through the county council. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate that. And now, I'd like to ask Martha Vale to speak for two minutes, please.
I want to thank The Daily Reporter and Wayne and everybody connected with having this debate. In 1977, my family moved from Carmel to Hancock County. I love the tranquility associated with living in a rural setting. Choosing a smaller school system, Eastern Hancock, was the perfect choice where our three children were able to grow and be involved. In 1985, along with my husband, Bill, and son, Ron, Vale's Classic Cars was established. In 1988, we transferred our church membership from the Wilkinson United Methodist Church to the Wilkinson Church of Christ, where we are still active members. I have taken the initiative to become educated on local issues, and now am taking action by running for political office. I have attended numerous meetings of the council and commissioners and have seen firsthand the workings of our local government. I exhibited leadership when I led a group of small business owners before the Greenfield City Council to resolve the controversy over the storm water rates being imposed upon all businesses. We were able to reevaluate the rate charges to be more conducive to the size of our lots, and a compromise was reached and agreed upon. I bring a fresh outlook and perspective to the table. Change requires voting and new leadership. I am not a politician, but a person with Christian values who wants to serve you, and I say, "Remember the letter 'D.'" Vote Vale.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Now, we would like to ask Scott Waldridge to give his two minutes, please.
Good evening. I want to thank everybody involved tonight, including the audience. I am happy to have the opportunity to share my views. My name is Joseph Scott Waldridge. I'm a local attorney, and I've been residing in Hancock County for almost 11 years with my wife, Amy. Amy is a physician with Hancock Physician Network, and we have twin one-year-old daughters. Besides being an attorney, I have an MBA with a concentration in finance from the IU Kelly School Business. Tonight, there are several main issues that will impact serving on the county council. One of these is improving the quality of place in Hancock County. To me, this means having more destination places for all our citizens, including young families like mine. Examples like Tyner Pond Farm and Tuttle Orchards, or other places like Parks and Trails. A second area is taxes, specifically the fact that our income tax rate is too high, especially compared to counties surrounding Indianapolis. I will discuss those issues in more detail throughout our discussion tonight. First, let me share something with you. Listen, think, act is more than just a campaign slogan. A little over one year ago, our youngest was on a ventilator. The physicians had determined that she either needed medicine and/or surgery, and my wife and I listened to the options and potential problems. With no time to get a second opinion, my wife was knowledgeable about medicine, and I had to think about everything and make a decision immediately. We had to listen, think, and act, and today, the twins are fine. When I become a member of the county council, I will take that same reasoned approach in listening to what others have to say, consulting with those who may be more knowledgeable, and then acting. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. And we'll come back over to this side with Debbie Bledsoe to give your two minutes, please.
I'm not a speaker in front of a lot of people either, like Ed. I'm finishing up my first term as county council. This has been a rewarding job, but I don't consider it a job. It's serving the people of Hancock County. I've met a lot of interesting people and made a lot of friends. I know I have voted on some issues that not everyone agreed with. I have also been told that you can't please everyone all the time and never second-guess your vote. We have issues on the tables. One is the fairground. I don't have much to say about it. I haven't seen the plans or the cost. It's hard to make a decision without this. We have made progress on the roads, and as time goes on, I think we will be more pleased with the roads. They will never be perfect, but it's a continuing process. And that's it for me.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Everyone did such a good job. Now, we're going to go into the part where we're going to ask a question. You'll be given one minute, well, you'll be given 90 seconds, a minute and a half. With 15 seconds to go, I'll ding the bell. The air horn won't go off, but I'll, like I say, let you try to finish your statement out, and then I'll let you know that your time is up. Because like I say, it is quicker only with 90 seconds. So, the person that will get the first question is...
What's your hat, Wayne?
Oh, I dropped my ball, Sam. Martha Vale. So, Martha, I don't know if that's lucky or not lucky, but you get the first question. And the first question is, what are your main goals for the position if elected?
What are my main goals?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. I actually wrote down three goals that are priority with me. One is to resolve the issues surrounding the fairgrounds, and transparency is very critical in this. Public safety with the jails problem explored and analyzed to produce results in the best interest of the community. Also, smart spending. We need to be frugal, make tough decisions, and when is it appropriate to bond? And that, I just listed three, so I know I'm done.
All right. That's fine. Sometimes it doesn't take long to get things done, so... Okay. Now, Scott, it is your turn. You have a minute and a half. Do you guys want me to read the question in between?
No, it's still goals, right?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
My technique for handling most issues that will come to the council in the future consists of listen, think, act, which are three goals I have in addressing issues. However, the three most important issues that we're currently facing, of what people are saying, are probably roads, public safety, and maintaining our lower taxes. Hancock County has an income tax rate of 1.7 percent that you pay on what you earn. This is 70 percent higher than Hamilton County, Johnson County, and Boone County of the counties that surround Indianapolis. There's going to be other issues, too, and fairgrounds, which involves improving the quality of place, jail overcrowding, which is an element of public safety, local and statewide, this is going to be an issue, and the drug epidemic, which is an element also of public safety, and this is happening locally and nationally. No matter what, listen, think, act. Listen to the issues and to what the people in our county think of the issues. Think about how to resolve the issue. Ask others what they think. There are at least seven people up here that will not win, and I'll be more than happy to ask them for their opinion. Finally, act on the issue. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Now, Debbie Bledsoe, we would like for you, same question. What are your main goals if elected to this position?
I wrote down three goals, and I'll share them with you. Help with the drug task force. We were able to give $100,000 for the next three years for a new narcotics officer and to establish a task force. Hopefully, this will help them get the heroin problem under control. And we have, like everyone said, the jail overcrowding. We need to find a short-term and a long-term fix for the jail system, whether it be send them all over to Wayne, or build a new jail. But that's something for the future. And the road improvements. The road improvements have been great. I've mentioned that before. We have given extra money to update roads, take care of roads. Some of you in your part of the county haven't seen it, but it will get over your way at some time. And that's all I've got to say.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate it. Next is Steve Crane. What are your goals if elected to this position?
My goals for this position are mainly a mindset and a train of thought. There's always going to be continually issues that come up, and I touched base earlier on the drug problem. A lot of these concerns are everybody's concern. But mainly, when we approach these issues, is that we use the right frame of mind. It's not what I think, it's not what her and I think, it's not what you and I think. It's seven people and the people, seven councilmen and we, the people. So, we have to figure out what we, the people, and the right thing to do is on all issues and continue to work a mindset. When it comes to the drug issue, it's not just going to be one program, this is going to work. That's a big one right there. That whole drug deal right there, the whole county is going to have to hold hands. It's not just our, that issue alone is just not going to be our county. All the other counties, a lot of the other counties are facing the same problem or more. That epidemic is probably the whole country or big parts of the country. So, we're going to have to retrain ourselves and think about what it's going to take, not only that issue, but the same with other issues, whether it's roads or whatever. We're going to have to have the right train of thought, approach it with common sense, balance, smart, well-thought-out decisions. So, that's...
All right. Thank you, Steve. Next, we have George Langston. Next, we have George Langston. So George, you have a minute and 30 seconds. What are your goals?
First of all, is to support our law enforcement here in the county. We lost an officer here up in Howard County recently, and so that is probably one of the most important things we need to do. I'd like to see us restore the openness and accountability back into our county government, allowing the people to speak at public meetings and actually listening to them. I also would like to see the end of the Hancock County Exposition Corporation. They've asked for taxpayer funds. As such, they're not needed. We don't need them getting taxpayer funds, and then those funds disappear out of the sight of the public because it's now in the hands of a private corporation. I also would like to eliminate, what I see is conflicts of interest. I've called them ethical conflict of interest. Doing things that normal, normal people would not consider the right thing to be doing. Putting yourself in a bad light or where the public has a bad perception of what you're doing. I'd like to see taxes lowered wherever possible. We need to also find a way to fund the Mount Comfort Corridor a little bit better than what we're doing now. And I'd like to see the east side of this county's roads improve a lot more than what they're being done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, Mark Lozier. What are your goals if elected to the county council?
Well, thank you, Wayne. Some of the goals that I have for our county is, one, is everybody understanding the county council position. The county council is really the financial aspect of running the county. We hear a lot of folks here up here talking about changing this, changing this, but that's done by our executive side, the commissioners. And what we are here to do is say, we support you, and here's the funds, or this is how we can get it done. I do want to move forward and do something with our fairgrounds. I really feel that a new fairgrounds is needed for our community, mainly for our kids. This helps a lot. It works a big circle. They have something better to do. They're not trying to experiment with the, with the drugs. But I know we can get our fairgrounds done. The roads, keep moving on the roads. The roads are great. I look back in the 2012 debate, and it was, it was about roads then, too. So, we are moving forward on the roads, it appears, and I think we're going to get these roads in a good position. Mental health, drugs, I'd like to explore the 4% on taxable property, mental health funds that are available, and the main economic growth to keep our community growing and bringing in businesses, peoples, and monies to spend. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now, I'd like to ask Bob McDaniel. What are your goals if elected to county council?
Well, I sound like a broken record, but I'm like everybody else with the roads. We have to provide the funds to the commissioners, and the commissioners in turn talk with the guys at the highway department and get that done. The east versus west side, as I think George said, the east side is just, some of it's just deplorable when you get down in the southeast part of the county. Those roads have been turned back to gravel for some of you that don't know, and they've been that way quite a while. Next thing I was, we need, we're going to have to address, it's going to happen, is some type of capital project, whether it be the fairgrounds, I don't like to call it that, the expo center, whatever you want to call it, jail, community corrections, whatever. We've got to figure that out. There's going to be something happen. The problem I see is, everybody's got a want. Everybody wants this, everybody wants that. What we need to do is figure out what the need is. There's a huge difference between wanting and needing. The economic development, I really don't feel like it's the existing taxpayers' job to continually subsidize every business that wants to come into this county. Don't get me wrong, I don't, I don't want to lay out the wrong groundwork here. We need to, we need to look at those, those places that are wanting tax breaks and abatements and whatever you want to call them, and see what the economic impact is on us, whether we're going to lose money, whether we're going to make money, and approve and deny those accordingly, because I believe the council is the one that does that. The last thing I think we need to do every year is put out some type of report, whether it's written, somebody gets in front of the camera and it's available to everybody, of what the county's done for the year, all the offices, all the office holders, whether it's the highway, the clerk's office, the jail. People need to know what's went on within the county.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Now, I'd like to ask Edgar Moore, your minute and a half. What are your goals if elected to this position?
Okay, thank you, Wayne. My, my primary goal is to protect the taxpayers. The, there's so many different things that are on the table that needs addressed. The, the House bill that was passed down for the community corrections and probation and the jail, this very much needs addressed. The, through the court system, come up with an alternative program for the drug rehabilitation. Strong economical development, you know, to maintain what we have responsibly and, and balance the growth with responsible financial growth. And the approach on the, on the infrastructure, on the roads and bridges, there's, there's so many things that's laying on the table that needs to be addressed that, that we could, instead of just sitting here pinpointing the three, I want to be able to help put all matters at hand and take it into the future. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. John Priori, same question, minute and a half. What are your main goals if elected as county councilman?
I think Edgar and the rest of the candidates have hit on a lot of things, because there are a lot of things that need to be accomplished, and so there's a lot of goals out there. But first, before I can determine what my main goals are going to be, I'm going to have to see how much damage the current council does between now and January 17th, because there are a lot of bills that this current council is going to have to work on, and depending on what they do, the goals and priorities may change. I think we often, our council reacts and treats symptoms rather than causes, and we have a lot of unfixed causes out there. The public safety lower and edit need to be fixed. Those statutes have been needed, needed tweaking for six years, over six years, and our council hasn't done anything. The inequities in taxing and disproportionate taxation caused by the council choosing the various different funds, they don't pick the right funds to fund the project. As a result, we have a class that's being targeted, and that's the taxpayers who are below the cap. They are constantly getting targeted. And the new farm assistance that bill that they passed, it's, they think it's going to help the farmers, but it's going to hurt them. Because all it does in lowering the value of land is lower your net assessed value. That in turn is going to raise your tax rates.
All right, thank you, John. We appreciate it. Now, it goes to Dave Roberts, same question, what are your three goals?
Yep.
Or your, I didn't mean to say three goals.
I don't have two.
What are, yeah, I was going to say, what are your goals if elected to this position? You may have 13, but what are your goals, sir?
Okay, well, that's a lot to get through in 90 seconds, but the advantage of going last, I've heard a lot of great ideas up here. But I think it's important to echo something that Mark said, and that's understanding what's within the jurisdiction of the county council. And I think there are a lot of issues that we can address or try to address as a community. Within the county council purview, though, it's important to remember that it's the budget process and where the money goes. But I, so I think, actually, I really do have two goals that are important to me. Number one is to serve the community with integrity, commitment, and energy, and bringing new ideas. That's, that's what's encompassed in energy for me, so it's, it's more of a personal goal. But then, at the larger level, it's to encourage responsible budgets with growth and economic development. To touch on one issue, though, that has been raised by quite a few folks with the roads bill that was passed and signed into law today by Governor Pence, we have a new, roughly $9 million that's coming back to the county. So, it's important that our county council responsibly uses that funding, but then that should free up, I think, another roughly $2 million that's historically been allocated to roads improvement in the last few years. So, those are opportunities for us to look at how else to invest that money or return that to the taxpayers if, through lower tax rates, if that's the route that we choose to go. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I have drawn the next person to get the next question, and the winner is Edgar Moore. And so Edgar, you get to answer the first, this question first. Should the county council financially support the proposed new fairgrounds project? If so, where should it draw that money from? You have a minute and a half to answer that, sir.
That's an open-ended, loaded question. I'm, I'm very much in favor of the county project for the fairgrounds. If it's done in a proper manner. I think the way it is right now, there's too many questions. I see the facilities that has been, there needs to be investigations. I'm, I'm siding with commissioners when, on this, and I know that I'm not a councilman yet to, to do this, but there has to be further, this has to be looked into further. It, it has to be downsized in a way that is economical, affordable for this county. Where to come up with the money? I think that once the project started in a small phase, I think that public funds could be sought after, and I think the project would be initiated more on private funds than being on taxpayer burden funds, like, like it always has been. The fair, this, this can's been kicked for 25 years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, John Priori, the same question. Should the county council financially support the proposed new fairgrounds project? If so, where should the, should it draw the money from?
Okay, first of all, it's a bad question. You said, should the county support the proposed new fairground? I haven't seen a proposal. The commissioners haven't seen a proposal. I've been involved in this thing from day one. I visited all the county fairgrounds with this group when it went around, and I'm here to tell you, what they're doing and what they have is not a proposal. We need to go back to what the commissioners did on day one, on April 15, 2014. They established a, a county board to look into this, okay? I made a similar presentation on September 1st of 2015 outlining it. We've got to start from scratch, go back, talk with the 4H Ag Association, the Fairground Board, the 4H leaders, and the Purdue Extension, and find out what is the situation? What do they really need? All we heard is from this one group, and I'm sorry, they do not represent the views of the, of the majority of the county. I want a fairground, I want to help them out, but we've got to do, start it off right and do it right.
Thank you, sir. Okay, the next person is Dave Roberts. Should the county council financially support the proposed new fairgrounds project? If so, where should it draw that money from?
Sure, so, thanks, Wayne. I think that, yes, county fairgrounds improvement is important to the community. I've driven by there, I've seen it, and much like my own hometown in Bluffton, about 20 years ago, their facility was inadequate in order to continue to draw folks in and really have a community center that could serve the community well. I appreciate John's point, and Debbie mentioned earlier as well, that, you know, even serving on the council, she hasn't seen the firm plans. So, while I agree in principle and support it, I think it's important to take a look at the budget, take a look at the items that are included, needs versus wants, understanding what we're trying to accomplish with the, with the facility, and making sure that the budget is responsible, the plan is responsible. As far as where to get that money, I mentioned earlier, there's a couple million dollars has been freed up in money that's been returned by the state to us via, via the roads bill. So, I think that that's one area to start looking. Second thing is to consider bonding. Bonding's a very important, but also a very powerful tool, and with great power comes great responsibility. So, we shouldn't be using it lightly, but if we understand the budget and the plan well, then I think that that could be a resource to be used.
Thank you, sir. Martha Vale. Should the county council financially support the proposed new fairgrounds project? If so, where should it draw that money from?
Okay. Well, I have opinions on the fairgrounds. To me, after all the options have been explored on keeping and improving the present location of the current fairgrounds dismissed, then the original intent of relocating and building the fairgrounds would be justified. I believe that we are currently on a potentially disastrous path with the project in the hands of the current nonprofit, private corporation, HCECC. There needs to be a board appointed by the commissioners with no elected officials on it to create a situation where conflict of interest might be perceived. This board would answer directly to the commissioners and thus to the citizens of the county. It is way past time to resolve the issues surrounding the fairgrounds. Transparency must be upheld at all times, and a referendum might be necessary if taxpayer dollars are being used. I cannot see until more, a plan, a vital plan is brought forth, giving any more money until we know exactly what the details in this entails.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, Scott Waldridge, same question.
The majority of people, including myself and my family in Hancock County, want a new fairground. Optimally, it would be best that the fairgrounds were built by a for-profit or not-for-profit corporation that could be self-sustaining, and other than reasonable tax breaks, would not need the taxpayers' help to fund the project and maintain the fairgrounds over time. Our county needs a strong plan to improve the quality of place here, and the fairgrounds is just one element that needs to be improved. But we must do our best to avoid raising income taxes any higher. But knowing how this initiative failed over a decade ago, it is more important than ever to find a way to make it happen. With the last resort, the final option, being raising your taxes, and I would want to start with taxes of choice, and often affect those that are traveling through our county, like a food and beverage tax, maybe some other type of tax when you're thinking outside the box. I believe this avenue of building a new fairgrounds could lead to a growth in agritourism and more agricultural businesses in Hancock County. There could be outside corporate sponsors to help build this facility, with each building being named after one. And we should be open to building in stages. I know a lot of people who have quit going to the current fairgrounds, but would attend if we can have, find a way to make this happen.
Thank you, sir. Debbie Bledsoe, same question concerning the proposed new fairgrounds.
I agree the fairgrounds needs improvement. I don't think we need to spend 30 or 40 million dollars on a new fairgrounds. I've talked to different people in ag. A friend of mine, her grandkids are now in 4H, and I ask her, you know, what their farmer friends have said and everything. They don't understand how we're going to get 30 or 40 million dollars either. I think we need to let the commissioners take it over, and they can, maybe assign a group to do that. But there's probably, we could probably find money to do, replicate what we already have out on the county farm, and that would, you know, make it a little larger. I don't know what the answer is right now, but I have not seen any plans or the total cost either.
Thank you, ma'am. Steve Crainey, the same question concerning financial support of the proposed new fairgrounds project.
When it comes to the fairgrounds, and it's probably the, one of the main reasons that when I start hearing this 30 or 40 million dollar number and everything, that it probably spurred me to become involved and, and everything was probably the main reason. That's kind of a two-sided question, because I'm split, I'm split myself on, I, I haven't really figured out if all the people of Hancock County, or the majority of the people of Hancock County, are in favor for this. If they are, then I think that it's the right thing to do. I personally, myself, when I say two-sided, I personally, myself, I actually love our current fairgrounds. Yes, it's dated, and it could use some improvements in this, in all those kinds of things. We use it all the time for auctions and other events, mainly auctions, but I actually like it. Yeah, I would like to see them maybe do some improvements there. I know the county, several years back, you know, they, they used to get quite a bit more money to help maintain and things, and they've taken some, or I think voluntarily maybe gave that back, back up, but it's... gave that back up, but it's, I mean, I don't know if it should go on a referendum, or what. I'm not opposed if that's what the people feel like they need, but I really don't think that question's ever been answered. And so, when it comes down to it, I mean, again, a smart, well-thought-out decision, use some common sense, and ask a lot of questions. So, I could go on for that, on that topic for probably another hour and a half.
But you don't have time, so... All right. I appreciate it. Just happened to be right there at that time, Steve, and we'll go from there. Next is George Langston's turn. So George, would you please address this issue?
First of all, I am in favor of a new traditional-type fairground, even with a reasonable horse arena, if we can afford it. And my granddaughter is actively involved in 4H right now. But it's no secret that I have attended every HCECC meeting they had last year, and I am the one that came up and announced that they were talking 40 million dollars. That's because I record everything, all the meetings I go to. We need to eliminate the HCECC, and I'm calling on Commissioner Huber and Armstrong at their next meeting to do that. We don't need to wait anymore. Like I said earlier, they're requesting public funds, and we can do a better job with oversight of those public funds than a private corporation. The fairgrounds is just one-third of the project that the HCC is asking for. The estimated cost is somewhere between 16 and 18 million dollars. And so, get down to the crux of it, yes, I'd like to see a new fairgrounds, but not this 40 million dollar monstrosity they're planning.
Thank you, sir. Next is Mark Lozier. The same question concerning the fairgrounds.
Well, thank you, Wayne. The fairgrounds, I've been involved with this fairgrounds myself for the last couple of years, and I want to see it built. I've seen it, our one we have, I've helped pull people out of the mud, visitors from out of town. It's time we make a change. We need just the traditional fairgrounds. We need to set a number. And when you have that number set, if it's 15 million, I think we can build a lot for that. We would not have a Metroplex or a convention center. If we're going to do that, let's do it up at the interstate, where we have hotels, where we have restaurants, where we can draw from it. Or we can, the corporations can use it for other things. Let's take the other, let's take the other part of that land and build it for agricultural businesses, build an ag incubator businesses. Take the center, put our pond in it, which we need. Building in stages costs more money. As I have seen that over my years handling large commercial claims, when you do it in stages, you have to bring all the equipment back, you have to start all over again, that costs money. We need it. I think we can get it done. The commissioners, along with the council, will have a new fairgrounds. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Last person to get to answer this question is Bob McDaniel. Bob, would you like to give your minute and a half, please?
I can just say ditto if you want. No, to start with, my father was in FFA and 4H. I was, both my boys were, and if the good Lord willing and the creek don't rise, my grandson will be there too. So, I see a need, I don't know how we can do it. We keep calling it a fairgrounds, the fair only amounts to one week out of the year. What are we going to do with this grandiose facility, the other 51 weeks of the year? What started out was the need or the want for a simple horse barn and arena, and it's turned into a multimillion-dollar project from everything I can hear. There's no, there's no questions that have been answered yet on what we're going to build, how much it's going to cost, or how we're even going to pay for it. And if it is built, will it cover its, will it cover its own costs? Will it make enough money to even turn the lights on? That's a big problem, I think. Do we spend some major dollars on our existing fairgrounds? Maybe that's the first thing we need to look at a little harder than jumping in and building a new expo center. Spend some money there. From what I've told this past year, with the way the livestock was taken in and out of the buildings, it wasn't a problem for the livestock. As I said earlier, we've shown livestock, we have personally shown from Baltimore to Seattle, our livestock pavilion is not that bad. It's better than a lot of places we've backed our trucks into and unloaded sheep. So, I don't know what the answer is yet, and as Debbie said, there's a whole bunch more to be done before we can do anything.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Next question, and the person gets to go first?
You didn't throw my name back in there.
No, I didn't throw your name back in there. Sorry, you don't, but of all things, Bob McDaniel is the winner of this. We're going to start right here, and then you'll be second, so prepare yourself, sir. So, Bob McDaniel, the next question I have on this list is, "The county council has borrowed money three times in the last four years to support various projects that they say their budget can't cover. When is it appropriate for the council to bond, and when should the council rely on the county's cash reserves?"
Well, as I said in the paper in the interview, the Daily Reporter said, "I don't know that it's ever a good time to borrow for what I would call day-to-day operations." They borrowed, money was borrowed or bonded, whatever you want to call it, to me, it's borrowing money for some building renovations, repairs, and things like that this last time. I don't see that as a major renovation. You and I, in our home life, we try and save a little money if we're going to put a new roof on our house, or if we're going to put a new furnace in and try and pay for it. I think those things need to be done. As I read the other day in the paper from Robin Lauder's Gateway Papers that go into the reporter, "We ended the year with 45 million dollars in the bank." 45 million, and we're borrowing money? You know, the general fund alone ended with 5 and 1/2 million. Now, the general fund, granted, that's for the day-to-day operations of everything. Paying payroll, paying insurance, and things like that. I think the money can be moved around, and things like that can be done. The rainy day fund, it ended up with 4.7 million. That's what the rainy day fund is for, for those so-called emergencies. Rather than borrow money, we need to look at that. When we borrow money or get bonds, the only people making money are all the consultants and all the lawyers who are standing there telling us to do it. They're reaping what we do. So, I think we need to slow that up a little bit.
Thank you, sir. Ed Moore. Same question concerns, "When should the county bond, and when should they use their cash reserves?"
Thank you, Wayne. Well, I've learned in my personal life, you can't borrow your way out of debt. Therefore, bonding should be used sparingly. With the reserves that the funds have, I feel as if bonding should only be done in like a capital project, like if we build a new jail or minimum security facilities. As far as the overall taxes collected, and it should be dispersed, that's what it's intended for, the fund of the departments, all, and everything that the budgets are set for, and to pay as we go. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. John Piori. Same question, sir.
Okay. You've opened up Pandora's Box on this one. The commissioners, a couple of years back, made a deal with the devil, that being the county council. In order for the county commissioners to get additional road funds from the council, the council said, "Okay, we'll give you the additional road funds if you will bond." And they were required for each passing year, then to make up a list of items to bond for. We didn't have to bond. When you are putting 3 million dollars in 2014, another 3 millions in 2015, in your cash balances, and building them at that rate, and bonding for 2 million, you are robbing the taxpayers. Those bonds are not necessary. And I agree with Bob McDaniel. Bonding is never the way to go for operational goods, okay? Major things, yes. And the problem with these non-referendum bonds, only a certain segment of the population, again, is paying back, paying those bonds back. And that's mainly the farmers, and the people, and the businesses, and the people who are below the cap. I am never for bonding of this type of bonding, these non-referendum bonds. If you've got a big one for a new jail or something, that goes total referendum bond, that's fine. Then the public will speak. But what they're doing now is dead wrong. And then, the commissioners got to get a backbone and tell the council where to stick it.
Okay. Moving right along. Dave Roberts. We'd like for you to answer that same question concerning bonding when to and when to use county cash reserves, please.
That's a good question. Thank you. I'm just envisioning where to stick it, that's all. Because it's a big bond. So at any rate, you know, I will tell you that I would apply the personal principles that my wife and I use in our home budgeting process to the public as well. And personally, I don't know where everyone else on the stage stands. I would guess that we're all conservatives fiscally in our personal lives, since this is a Republican debate and not a Democratic debate. But, in general, my wife and I don't borrow for depreciating assets. We don't like to borrow money to go buy a TV. We don't borrow money to go buy, you know, some of the things that would be depreciating assets. And I think that that's the principle to keep in mind here in the public sphere as well. I would like to see us try and attach a revenue stream to those things that we're bonding for. So is this bonding made as an investment in the community? Or is it simply being made for something that we could otherwise use cash reserves for?
Thank you, sir. Martha Vail. Same question.
Okay. A bond is paid for by everyone, but if your property tax has not reached its cap, that means if you live in Jackson, Brown, or Blue River Township, you will be the ones bearing the most responsibility by seeing an increase in your taxes. The present council, with the incumbents that are running here included, have never voted down a tax or bond when put to a vote. With the amount of money in the cash reserves, about 17 million dollars, and growing every year, my question, why the urgency to bond? Bonding might be necessary when unexpected expenses arise that have to be addressed immediately, and no funds are available. But there are many hidden costs to a bond which need to be exposed when considering implementing such a move.
Thank you, ma'am. Scott Waldridge. Your same question, sir.
Of what's been said, I have to agree with that, one, that it's not best to borrow for day-to-day operations, two, bonding should be used for capital projects, and three, don't borrow for depreciating assets. For me, it depends on the facts of the situation. Currently, around the world, many nations are having negative interest rates to help spur investments. Obviously, if the county's ever to borrow at zero or negative interest rates, we should highly consider it. However, current rates are above zero, and so we should limit bonding to what we need beyond what must be maintained in our minimum rainy day fund. The current economy factors heavily in this decision. As during tough times, we should consider bonding more than during prosperous times, while we are also saving for the future. Bonds are taking on debt. I'm not a fan of debt at any level, personal, corporate, or government. And look at the national mess we have with debt. But bonds, when used properly, can lead to great improvements for our county. So we must be smart in how we use bonding, and do it when it's necessary.
Thank you, sir. Now down to this end, to Debbie Bledsoe. Same question, ma'am.
I'm going to read the general obligation bond for 2015. Now, back in about 2008, when the economy went south, the commissioners had to put off maintaining a lot of our buildings. This resolution from June 2, the council sent down to the county, or the commissioners sent it to the county council. The project will fund the resolution in addition to the Hancock County Jail, Hancock County Courthouse, Hancock County Courthouse Annex, Hancock County Memorial Building, Hancock County Emergency Operations Center, Hancock County Prosecutor's Office, Hancock County Extension Office Operations Center, Hancock, well, I put that, the Extension Office Building, and Hancock County Highway Building, together with all the necessary and related equipment and the cost issued the bond therefore. We didn't use, we haven't used it for everyday maintenance. This was stuff that was put off, and it was time to fix this stuff. If you let it go any longer, then it's going to be a mess.
Thank you, ma'am. Steve Crainy. The same question.
Bonding. So, I think in my response to the reporter, which came out yesterday, you know, I put, you know, I said in there that, you know, it is sometimes a necessary evil. We all have a mortgage on a house, or a car payment. And I think there's those times that we're going to need it. Now, I'm not an advocate of borrowing money if you don't have to. Nobody wants to have to owe anyone. We don't like it. But in defense of the commissioners and the council, I do believe that they are very conscious. I believe that they work hard to try and keep things as tight as they can. Yeah, maybe things get a little one-way or the other, and they've had to negotiate some deals, or do what they had to do to get things done. They came out of a bad period of time. I know I talked to, I was curious about the bonding. I don't know all there is to know about it. I talked to Mr. Armstrong the other day and asked him about it. I wasn't even sure what our debt was, or what our total bonds were. And, you know, he said that we had it down under 5 million. I, for all I knew, we could have been 40 or 50 million, or we could have owed bonds out for 10 or 20 years. Because I'm sure that there are places in the country that are like that. I think overall, we're very, very responsible in this county. I don't like bonding. I don't like the idea of it. I don't like the idea of borrowing money. But there is a time that it's going to be necessary. So, again, balance and smart thought-out decisions.
All right. Next is George Langston. Answer the same question, sir.
First of all, I want to echo John and Martha's comments, as they were right on. And I also want to point out, the one time they did not bond in 2014, the district county councilmen were up for election. These little 2 million and 1.995 million dollar bonds is like ducks nibbling the taxpayer to death. It's not necessary. In the last two years, this council has removed over 7 million dollars out of our economy with doing bonds like this and stashing this money in their seven discretionary spending accounts, which ended the year with over 17 million dollars in those seven accounts. That money could have been spent fixing the courthouse. And on top of that, the county commissioner's budget ended the year below budget. So, there was no need for a bond. And in my opinion, a bond should only be used when it's approved by the voters of the county of Hancock, and through a referendum. And it should be used for major ticketed items that we must have, like a new jail, or new building for county corrections to house prisoners. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, Mark Lozier. The same question.
Well, they save the best for last, as always. So here we go. Bonding. We need to bond on major capital projects, not to cap into our cash reserves. But to answer to George's state, the Daily Reporter reported back that in 2012, a bond was turned down. Of 2 million dollars was asked for to buy some new trucks, but they did not approve that bond. So, 2012 was one of those years also. A bond is like a business line of credit. If you need it for major repairs, we should do it. We have capital reserve, but that capital reserve is for the rainy day. And we should always maintain a certain amount of cash reserves in our chart of accounts. We've got over 170 chart of accounts. So you start having an extra $330,000 to $100,000, that adds up real fast. But it's each account. You just can't add them all up and say, "Oh, wow, here's some extra money, let's go spend it." Because we're controlled by each one of those accounts that we cannot... Because we're controlled by each one of those accounts that we cannot take the money out of. So if we need to, and we have major repairs, you know, this $2 million is part of a $17 million worth of buildings that need to be fixed. So anyways, I'm about bonding if and when we need it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Folks, we're down to a situation of where we don't have enough time for another question and then also to have the final minute of speaking. So what I have decided to do, I'm going to give each candidate two minutes, and that way you can talk about whatever you want to talk about. This is your final summary, and so instead of having one minute, you'll have two minutes. But if there's another topic you want to talk about, as far as I know, people have mentioned the possibility of a new jail or expanding community corrections and probation. If you want to speak more about the fairgrounds, any kind of issue you feel like that you would like to address, I think the voters would probably appreciate having two minutes for you to go through with that than to struggle with a question and not have proper time. So, right or wrong, remember, I do have the boss hat, so that's what we're going to do, okay? So I'm gonna draw out to see who will start their final two minutes. You guys are out. You're... I don't know how we... John Piori. So, Mr. Piori, you have two minutes. I'll do like the first time with fifteen seconds to go. I'll let you...
...woman Bledsoe. From 2009 all the way through 2015, the cash reserve, cash balance for those seven liquid accounts increased every year. There was still no need for bonding, okay? And they increased at rates of two million, three million, one million dollars. Also, in addition to that, during those periods when they did bonding, they had public safety low-it income tax available to use and also they edit the county economic development income tax, and they didn't use them at those times. According in response to Mr. Lozier, the only person that profits on these non-referendum bonds... There's a big difference between the non-referendum bond and the referendum bond. And we're talking non-referendum. The only people that prosper are the county attorney, the county financial consultant, and Ice Miller. In 2012, when they disapproved that one bond, that was by accident because Mr. Roney failed to show up. Otherwise, we would've had another bond. However, instead of doing the bond, since they lost the bond, they did increase the public safety low-it and the edit, okay, on that. On the fairground, I would like to really get back to that, 'cause I think we've lost another two years on that, and we could've been breaking ground this year. The Hancock County Exposition Complex Corporation really needs to graciously bow out of this thing. They've already wasted sixty-some thousand dollars of taxpayer money on their so-called studies, and we haven't seen the master plan. We haven't seen nothing. So I'd like them to back out and let the rest of us get on with the project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, Dave Roberts, two minutes to summarize whatever you'd like to speak about, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you again for this evening, for the opportunity to come and share some of the ideas that we have about how to serve the county. And I think it's obviously an important opportunity. There's eleven of us vying for three spots, and I would appreciate your support as one of those three spots. I've spoken a little bit about opportunities for economic development, and I think it's important to think more about the positive aspects of what Hancock County is doing and how we can continue to grow and become a vibrant and maintain the path toward a vibrant community where we have strong jobs, strong schools, and ultimately a great place to raise our family. There's been some perhaps negative comments up here by some of the other folks onstage. And I think if you read between the lines, sometimes I feel like the overarching theme is a reluctance to change. But one of the things that I've been taught in life is that in addition to death and taxes, the one constant is change. And the change can either control us or we can control it. And from my perspective, it's better to be in a role where we can control the change and affect that change in a positive manner. So that's the theme of my campaign. That's what we're trying to do, is encourage academic growth and development here, having more people in good jobs, taking them off the public dole, and contributing as a tax-paying member of our county. So as far as a basis for that, personally, I haven't really spoken much about my professional life. I get to work with a lot of young companies that are developing and growing, and that's really where a lot of our economic growth can come from. I also get to work with IEDC and several local county economic development agencies. And so I feel like I'm well-positioned to continue to create an environment where business is fostered and encouraged here in Hancock County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Martha Vail, you have two minutes to summarize your candidacy.
All right. I want to bring more transparency within this council. And I'd also like to establish twice a year to hold a meeting in the evening for a public meeting for listening solely to the concerns of the taxpayer, and that listening is the key word. Council meets now at 8:00 a.m., and that's not a convenient time for the working public. I want to get clarity and better understanding on the present budget and bring common sense back. I have shown leadership abilities, and my experience with running of a small business lends credibility in fiscal matters. I want to keep the public informed on what is occurring when different issues are brought forth that would directly involve them. People need to trust the leaders they elect, and I stand before you now pledging to listen more, talk less, learn from the past, plan for the future, and live in the present. The question I pose to you is, if everyone is so satisfied with our present council and the job they are doing, why are there nine other candidates running against the two incumbents in an eleven-man race to change the structure of the present council? I'm not a politician. I have no future political aspirations. My Christian values will guide me to do the best I can when confronted with matters at hand. I will make mistakes, but serving is growing with the knowledge to do the task before you, do the best of your ability, and always be humble in the eyes of those around you. There are many pressing matters that weigh on me, and I hope too, with your vote, bring those to a productive conclusion. Vote Vail.
Thank you, ma'am. Scott Waldridge, you have your two minutes, please, to summarize your candidacy.
Well, thanks, Mr. Anderson. Thank you, voters of Hancock County, for listening. Today was really about two issues: how we can improve the quality of Hancock County while maintaining an eye on our taxes and the budget. To me, it's very important to keep our taxes low and to look toward lowering taxes while improving the quality of life in our county. The short time today does not provide enough time to explain everything. So feel free to contact me whether in person, by phone, or by electronic communication, or visit me on Facebook at the page of J. Scott Waldridge. When I think of how my name, Joseph Scott Waldridge, appears at the bottom on the voting list and how that's often a disadvantage, I think about the Book of Matthew, chapter 20, verse 16 from the Bible, which says in part, "So the last shall be first." When you go and vote, please remember that you have now done the listen. Now it's time to think and act by voting for the last person, Joseph Scott Waldridge, and making him first. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now Debbie Bledsoe, you have two minutes to summarize your time, ma'am.
I want to thank the reporter, Daily Reporter, the school, Greenfield Central, Nine Star, Wayne, the Golden Pipes. I want to finish by saying, this has been very rewarding for me, and I really appreciate the men I have served council with. And there is no one like Robin and Jenny to keep us on our toes. I would love to serve the county for a second term, and remember to tell all your family and friends to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Steve Crainey, you have two minutes now to summarize your candidacy.
So I can say anything I want, right?
Yes, sir.
Within reason. Within reason? Okay. All right. And at the beginning, I kinda rushed through that. We didn't have a lot of time, so I would like to thank everyone. It goes without saying, so... Real quick, just another touch back to the drug thing, and I know it's not necessarily a direct council issue other than money or proposals that are brought to the council. But just as far as the county, the folks that are listening at home or gonna be listening at home, that's something everybody's gonna have to embrace in this county to beat. So it's not gonna... And it's not only gonna be money. The money's just not gonna fix it. This community's gonna have to come together as a whole. And I said, I started to say earlier, and hold hands, we're gonna have to become more one-on-one. There's a lot more to that, and I know a lot of people are probably blind or don't see that here. Maybe it's not right in front of you. But whether it's somebody that ends up breaking in or robbing your house, or whether it's a niece, a cousin, a brother, a sister, or somebody that falls victim one way or the other, or an innocent person, you know, maybe you wind up with hepatitis C just because you got exposed to something. I mean, that can happen to anyone. Or something like that. There's a myriad of things that could go on with that. So anyway, I'm gonna leave that alone. The last thing I do want to say is, I hope I don't get cut off here, but there is eleven good people running. And here a while back, you know, when I first got involved and there were people talking about the votes, there's three seats, and three people need elected. I've heard some talk about, and I really had to think about this, there's three seats, and some people would say, well, you know, if you don't... Or if you know somebody and really you just encourage them to vote for one, because if you get three votes, it might cancel, you know, your vote out. Well, I had to think and think about that. Now, politics can be kind of a nasty thing, and this isn't state or federal politics, but I'm gonna vote for three people. One of them myself, of course, but I'm gonna make three votes. Don't get caught up in that. Folks at home, don't get caught up in that. We need three solid, good leaders here. Whoever you feel like it is. If it's not me, it's not me. I hope it is, but please, please vote for three.
That's your two minutes.
Keep the county strong, keep the state strong, keep our country strong, and I want to be your next councilman.
Hooty-hoot! Hooty-hoot! All right. All right. Okay, I'm sorry. Now George Langston, sir, you have two minutes.
Thank you. Like Steve said, we're asking for you to vote for three of us up here. In my opinion, there's only three really good choices who demonstrated they have the taxpayers up forward first in their minds. And then I'm gonna go back to my other hard-hitting thing is the ethical conflicts that our county government people seem to be having here in this county. The word ethical means the principle of good conduct, and public perception does matter, and public perceptions of our elected officials matter. I have no conflict of interest. I have no ties to any business or company that does business with the county, and I will report and recuse myself if a conflict ever presents itself. As I see it, the HCECC is the biggest threat to the financial health of the county. I think I made that perfectly clear so far. But it's not the county council's responsibility to pay for private corporation debts just because four of them sit and are heavily involved within that corporation. Taxpayer dollars should never be given where there is no oversight by the public or the State Board of Accounts. That is what would happen if we give money to the HCECC. And at one of the meetings, I overheard one of these councilmen say to another board member, "Once you have the money, you can do what you want with it." I question the thinking of councilmen and president of the HCC and its board members for approving an hourly rate professional service not to exceed $30,000 contract when earlier that night, they reported they only had $1,131.18 in their account.
Okay. I'm sorry, sir, but we don't need to hooty-hoot, so... But you had your two minutes, and we appreciate it.
Okay.
Next, I'd like to have Mark Lozier. You have two minutes, sir.
Well, thank you, Wayne, and thank you again, Daily Reporter, Greenfield Schools, and Nine Star. And I'd like to thank Steve and George for their support for my vote. Thank you. In the beginning, we had our two minutes, and we just thought we'd have this one minute, so I'm gonna, like Mr. Roberts, I'm gonna finish up here. I bring 35 years of business experience, along with an education at IU and an MBA at Notre Dame. I manage business that averaged a gross sales of 40 million per year. Our county averages 36 million per year. I was a partner and a shareholder and CEO. The business was insurance catastrophe claims. I managed thousands of people and millions of claims over my 35-year career. I feel with my education and business knowledge that it's time to be an active part of the solution and help bring Hancock County to the next level where it needs to be in Indiana. I believe that our economic development needs to keep growing. We need to support Skip and everything that he is doing, because if we bring in more businesses and bring them in correctly and wisely, we then bring in property tax revenue, we bring in dollars that are spent in our community, and we bring in people to buy houses, clothing, furniture, support our local businesses, go to auctions. And so this is an important step in the growth of our county. I feel I have that ability. I've worked on it for about a year now, trying to fill that one spot, and thank Commissioner Stevens for all the work that he has done for us. So again, thank you. My name's Mark Lozier. I'll be in the middle of that ballot, and I look forward to your vote.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Bob McDaniel for your two minutes to summarize, please, sir.
Like everyone else, I want to thank the reporter for having us here tonight. As my role of being on the council would be, you're in charge of the folks... Let me hold that. You're in charge of the folks' money for the whole county. And if you want to, just ask my wife. I'm pretty snug. I'm really a tightwad, if you want to call it that. I'm the true fiscal conservative person. I like to plan things out a long way in advance, and when you're dealing with your state budgets, you plan those out in July, June sometimes, for the next year. So you have to be a long-range planner on those things. My job as a council member is to look out for the best interests of everybody's pocketbook. That goes for our children and our grandchildren also. We've gotta look that far ahead. I believe my time as the trustee in our township the last 15 years and the four years before that on the Eastern School Board has given me the insight, the knowledge in preparing those budgets and trying to stay within, living within those budgets to make this next step up in the county government. I truly think that you represent the pocketbook, the checkbook, whatever you want to call it, of you, the citizens, myself, when you're paying your property taxes, and we're indebted to you. We have to... We're working for you. And every four years, you get the chance to make somebody else work for you. I hope that's me. I'm... I'll be the one right below Mark in the alphabetical order. Again, I'd really appreciate your vote. I don't even know when we vote anymore because of the voting centers, but I'd appreciate your vote when you come out, May the 4th, 5th, whatever it is.
Third, I believe, third.
I believe it's May the 3rd. Thank you, sir. We appreciate your time. And certainly, last but not least, is Mr. Edgar Moore. You have your two minutes, sir.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Well-attended. Thank the reporter, Nine Star, the high school, and above all, our gracious host, Wayne. I'm that individual that wants to pull up my sleeves and let... I'd like the public to know that I'm honest, reliable, and a team player. As a lifelong resident of Hancock County and a local businessman, I have the unique understanding of the growth and changes this county has been through. I like getting work done as a team with a win-win for everyone. I've grown up here, raised my family here, earned a living here. I care about the community and our future. I have a servant's heart to serve the citizens. Three key things for success: hard work, determination, and communication. Thank you, and your vote would be appreciated.
All right. Thank you, Ed. Ladies and gentlemen, I was a double major at Ball State, criminal justice and corrections and radio and TV, and the one thing I did learn was to keep on the time. We've completed exactly 90 minutes, and you guys all did a great job. I appreciate all of you. Please give 'em a big hand for doing this. It's obviously not easy to put yourself out there among the community to do this. However, this is a very important position. However, this is a very important position, and like Steve and some of the others, you've got three votes. Go out there, vote. May the 3rd is election day, so be sure you can vote before that time, because we do have the voting centers. But be sure to go out there, exercise your right, and I want to thank you all for this evening. Thank you very much.